Call this meeting order. Those in attendance, please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues to join us in this regularly scheduled October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. As you come in tonight, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left, uh, there's a set of double doors. Past those double doors, there's a desk. On that desk, there's a sign-in sheet. And if you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Morrissey.
I'm here.
Belladino.
Here.
Grant. Sharp.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio. Veer.
Here.
Wolfrom.
Here.
Mayor Stocker.
Present.
You have seven present mayor.
Thank you, Katie. I did have correspondence from Councilman Stuccio. He's dealing with a family emergency tonight, so he's not going to be able to be with us. Um, okay, we'll move to approval of agenda. I've got one change to make to the consent agenda. It's a noise variance for Hillsdale College. Uh, Hillsdale College requests a noise variance for the Founding Fest. This celebration will take place within the quad three thirty-three East College Street, which is a college's address, uh, on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three, from five P M. until nine P M. Is there any other changes?
They can go on the consent.
Down on the consent agenda. Yes, sir. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add item letter G?
L.
L. Item letter L to the consent agenda?
No move. Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Wolfrom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
No move. Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Veer. Everybody approved? Yeah. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Uh, remember that this is public comment on agenda items only. So if you're speaking about something in particular, it needs to have a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda. Also, keep in mind, if you're here to speak about the cemetery animal ban, there will be a separate public co- public comment section, um, during that public hearing. So please, uh, wait until then for your comments. The podium's now open.
Good evening. I'm Ken Joswick, currently the president of the Hillsdale Business Association. Uh, I want to talk about the fee schedules, um, that have been discussed now for the last couple of months. Um, the Business Association puts on Summer in the City, Trunk or Treat, uh, the Light Up Parade. Two of the three events that are done currently are here in the city. Um, the current fee schedule, we paid over eight hundred dollars to hold Summer in the City. Uh, and we're being quoted twenty-four hundred dollars to put on this year's Light Up Parade. Uh, the Business Association's been doing this for almost thirty years. Um, the total dues collected this year were right around twelve hundred dollars for all the members total. Um, after thirty years, we have about six thousand dollars in the bank. So it's quick math at over three thousand dollars a year to do events that we're gonna end up like the Chamber and no longer be in Hillsdale. Um, it's just business. I get the fact that fees go up, expenses go up. I'm a business owner. I understand how that works. I'm not saying the fees that were originally there at twenty and seventy or whatever it was, as we talked in one of the meetings, you know, up to five hundred dollars would be reasonable and be able to sustain at that point. But to go to businesses and say, we need two hundred dollars or five hundred dollars to pay for permits and there's gonna be no advertising, one, we're not gonna have anybody know that the events were already being told, that people don't know that events are happening, even though they're the first Friday in August and the first Saturday of December every year. Um, there'd be no way to control that. Business owners aren't gonna write checks just to pay fees. There, there's just no way to sustain that. The idea is that you get something out of it when you sponsor events and you're recognizing the community. And again, not that the fees shouldn't go up somewhat, but to go from where we were to over three thousand dollars a year is just not gonna work.
Thank you, Ken. Any more public comment on agenda items?
Uh, yeah, good evening, everybody. I'm Mary Rita Cass. I am the chair of the Light Up Parade that the H B A does put together. So, um, I know a few of you and as colleagues of community service. Um, the, the fees, I found out, yep, we're gonna get some fees. And we went and we found a charity that was willing to donate and approve it. I'm fine with fees. Like, we can't have a ton, but I'm fine with doing footwork and being a community servant and finding these things. But then respectfully, labor being this extra fifteen hundred. So to kind of piggyback off of what Ken's saying, if there's gonna be a legality issue with, well, we can't have events because we can't have this free labor, I would just ask that maybe we can respectfully look at that a little bit more. Maybe there is a way that the city could absorb some of that because that's where it's tricky. The, to put the Light Up Parade on typically costs anywhere from like twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred some dollars. The lion item originally for many years was about twenty dollars that I needed from the city. And I worked with the wonderful people here tonight. I have no qualms with anyone. I love all of you people here. And I love how this event goes for our city, but it's just really a tricky thing to have it be that much if there's gonna be an additional bill after the fact. It's not just fees, it's the labor that comes onto that too. So I'd love it if the city would work with me. I feel like I'm a freaking city employee. If H B A can't do this, then city might have to take it on. And then you're paying your employees to do something I've been doing for free for ten years. So please consider that when you think about how much you're charging. And if it has to be that much simply because there's a legality to it, maybe it doesn't have to be the total amount of labor. So please look at that. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium and we'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and B P U claims of September twenty-eighth, payroll of September twenty-eighth, city council minutes of October second, finance minutes of October second, cemetery minutes of October fifth, O N G minutes of October ninth, public service minutes of October ninth, the Hillsdale College noise variance for block party, uh, B P U Eaton Yukon A M I software support, B P U aerator gearbox reducer purchase, B P U warehouse and W W T key roof replacements, uh, traffic control order twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, that's for the dawn theater for a food truck. And then item L is a noise variance for Hillsdale College for the Founding Fest. Is there any discussion regarding the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No move.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilmember Belladino.
Yes.
Grant. Excuse me. Sharp.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Veer.
Yes.
Wolfrom.
Yeah.
Mayor Stocker.
Yes.
And Councilperson Morrissey.
Yes.
Seven zero is approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, let me get caught up in my packet here as we move into communications petitions. The first item in communications petitions is a quarterly update from C L Rev regarding the Kiefer House Hotel. I hope everybody reads that. I see there's been some activity over there recently, so that's encouraging. Uh, the second item in communication petitions is the assessing your department, twenty twenty-three C R E I F T Oprah and N E Z reports. Is there anything to add in this? Do we have this Kim here today? No, you got anything for this, Dave? Okay. All right. Item letter C, Halloween Party Flyer. Um, this is the one that Ted puts on every year and the city helps sponsor in the Knights of Columbus and many others. Uh, it's at Hillsdale High like it is every year and, hey, it looks like there's a new magician. Amazing baffling magic by mid, by Bill. That's not, what is it, Professor Scookie? Oh, well, that'll be interesting. Item letter D is a letter from the Community Thrift Store. And that's from, uh, Missy Dust Jarden. It says, "Letter will serve as verification. Previously cited illegal campground on your property has been modified to the point that it does not meet the qualification of a campground." Okay, that's good news. And item letter C is a Comcast letter, another letter from Comcast. Any discussion on any of the items in communications petitions? Yes, sir. Councilman Soha.
Sorry. I walked through the Kiefer House this evening about five o'clock and the basement is close to being done. They're, they were physically digging with a jackhammer, the foundation for the, the new lift that'll be in there. And, uh, all the sludge is poured and the concrete slab is poured in the farthest, um, basement area. And all the pillars are ready to be formed up. So in the next few weeks, they said that the, the basement should be complete. So that's, that's necessary to get the upstairs.
I, I mean, you built from the ground up, so thank you for the update, Councilman Soha.
And I'm sorry.
Continue.
Um, I also spoke with Kevin, cause he lives across the street, doing the, um, foodie walk tonight.
Yes, sir.
I asked him two things. I said, please, um, get the foodie walks off of the council meeting nights so we can, um, he said, yeah, because he wanted to be here because he wanted to speak against the fee schedule. Um, just as our other two prominent citizens said, he thought they were burdensome.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Sharp.
I've also talked to Kevin and he's my eyes and ears over there keeping an eye on the Ki- uh, Kiefer House for us. So not only is the mayor next door, but it is coming along. So if it doesn't, you'll know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any more discussion on any of the items in communications petitions? Okay, we'll move on. We'll move into introduction, adoption of ordinances, public hearing. Um, item letter A, public hearing cemetery animal ban. Jason.
Good evening, Councilman. Um, due to, uh, this came in from this council of May sixteenth of last year with the recommendation to send it to the Public Services Committee meeting. Uh, since then, we've still had been issues with the cemetery. Um, it's ongoing concern for some time now. Owners use the cemeteries as dog runs, allowing their pets to run on leashes throughout the premises. Ordinance number twenty-two thousand or twenty seventeen oh one is currently in place while animals, as long as they're unleashed and controlled. And also leaving them to the roadways within the ordinance has consistently been ignored and expected animals relieving themselves on headstones various other places within the cemeteries, whether leashed or unleashed. Not only is it very disrespectful to the deceased, but their families as well. In an attempt to remedy this situation, Cemetery Board has requested the city attorney draft and amend the law ordinance prohibiting all animals from being in the cemeteries. The ordinance is attached for review and adoption after public health. Um, as we stated earlier, during the city council meeting on May sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, this item was sent to Public Services Committee for review and recommendation. Uh, Public Services Committee met on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three and recommended to send this back to council for public hearing to discuss move forward with cemetery animal ban.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Jason while he's at the podium? Thank you, Jason. Thank you. We will now open up the podium for public comment. Uh, please limit your public comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And remember, this is only speaking about the cemetery animal ban. Podium is now open.
Hello, uh, Kim Tucker, Ward four. Um, I didn't go up to Oak Grove Cemetery very much until I lost my daughter eleven years ago. And the dog issue has been an ongoing issue for years. And I know it's been brought up several times before and it seems to get brushed under the carpet. But this is something that's very ignorant of people that constantly take their animals up there. What I have witnessed is cars will go up there because it's very secluded in the back. And that's where my graves are at, is in the back. And it's very secluded. So they drive in there, head straight for the back, let their animals out of their vehicle, which I witnessed at least three dogs they're letting loose. They let them out. They let them go wherever, run wherever. Then they whistle and they all jump back in the van and they leave. So it's not just people that go up there and walk their dogs where they're supposed to on a leash and the roadway and stuff. That's not the issue. It's the issue that people are too lazy to walk their dogs, so they take them up there and just let them out. I've witnessed it several times. And, um, it's just a no-brainer that, you know, you don't do that in a cemetery. Now, I don't know about Lakeside or Lakeview, whatever it is. I don't know. And I'm not asking for that to be a no dog. I'm specifically here for Oak Grove. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any more public comment?
I'm, uh, Richard Smith. I live at sixty-three South Broad Street. I'm on the Cemetery Board. When this first came up a couple of years ago, it came up because of the signage. We wanted to try to simplify the signage and update it. And anyway, the dog issue of course came up. And we tried to work around it to lessen the blow to some people that wanted to walk their dogs, but it didn't seem to solve any problems amongst the council at that time. I've been to a lot of cemeteries and I, and I look at the signage. And in this day and age, a lot of them are putting up signs, no pets. Some of the cemeteries where they put up signs, no pets. I've been surprised because they were out, even out in the country somewhere. But when we go to a cemetery, we go there to respect those that are there. And we don't go to have to step over dog poop. And I've been to some cemeteries and some funerals not too long ago where I had to do that. And warning people, be careful. You can't expect the second sextance to go through the cemetery cleaning up dog poop. And you don't wanna pay him to do that. Uh, I have a dog. I have been to cemeteries with my dog. My dog does not leave the vehicle. He stays in while I do whatever I'm doing at the cemetery. I leave and I find a place to let him run. So based on the fact that this is a sacred ground, these cemeteries, I do not feel that we should allow dogs or any other animals, for that matter, to be running loose or even on a leash anymore. It's just, people are just not that cognizant of proper manners. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Any more public comment?
Yes, good evening, Councilman. My name's Frank Engle. I'm, uh, I live at fifty-three South Norwood. I'm also the cemetery sextant for the city of Hillsdale. Uh, a lot of this has come about because I do work at the cemetery a lot. I have been chased by dogs, almost bitten by dogs. I've had to clean up after dogs before funerals. And like Mr. Smith, I believe that there's sacred sanctified grounds where animals should not be allowed to run freely and just defecate or urinate wherever they so feel. And people do not clean up after them. It doesn't matter if they're on a leash or not on a leash. People don't clean up after them. People that come to grieve after the loss of a loved one should not have to deal with seeing the disrespect of others in plain sight on the ground. We have tried for years to enforce the leash laws at the cemeteries to prevent this from happening. But despite the fact that there's signage up where they're supposed to be reserved to the roadways and only be on a six-foot leash or less, people do not pay attention to it at all. It's completely disregarded. You might as well not have the signs. Like one person was saying, people drive across town to go there, open the, the doors, let their dogs out, run wherever, do whatever, and then leave. If they're gonna load their, uh, animals into a vehicle, go somewhere else. Don't go to a cemetery. That's not the only choice they have to run around. They could go to San La Presto Field over by our shop. No one uses it for anything. Dogs play there all the time. There's no problem because there's nobody buried there, I don't think. So we want to replace this. We've got a new expansion. We've put up Lakeview Cemetery. We're ready to put up a new sign and we'd like to only have to do it once. And we want to get the wording correct to correct typographical errors on the old signs. It would just be easier to do, to just take care of this once, but we'd like to just have dogs not allowed out of vehicles at cemeteries so that we do not have to worry about the poor guys weed whipping, hitting stuff that are not weeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we will close the podium. We'll open up the council table for discussion. Uh, I will say in the past, I have not really been in favor of this, generally speaking. My outlook is, uh, uh, sick society passes laws like a sick, sick person passes, takes medicine. And, uh, more laws don't usually do, they don't usually fix the solutions we're looking to them to fix. Um, but I would agree with Frank and Kim that this is sacred ground. It seems like we've been dealing with this for a while and people are just plain being inconsiderate about it. And, uh, there are plenty of other options in town. We've got several city parks. As Frank said, we've got the La Presto Field over there. There's a big plot over on Union Street, uh, right before you get Divine Street, that people like to take their dogs. So, um, at this point, I'm in favor of the cemetery animal ban. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it too. Uh, Frank and I went up and selected a grave site for me a couple of years ago. And, uh, being seventy-two years old and one foot in the grave, I think it's high time that we did something about this.
We're, we're all heading there, Councilman Morrissey, so.
Not so fast.
Oh, you'll be the guy that lives forever, Bruce. You're stubborn enough to do it, so. Any more discussion? Councilman Soha.
I'm on the Public Services Committee and I, I want to apologize that it took us a year to get this before full council. And, um, I'm definitely in favor of it, so.
Any more discussion? Councilman Veer.
Another point of consideration is that under the current ordinance, a police officer would have to actually witness it. And then you get the denial and then you get the evidence, which I wouldn't wanna deal with either. It makes it easy from a policing standpoint, uh, from the standpoint that if a person has a dog, they're in violation. They don't have to go look for pile of poo. And, uh, it would make the adherence to it and cooperation much easier on the, our public safety personnel.
And that's a good point, Councilman Veer. We, we can't expect our, uh, we can't expect our police to be the poo police, so. And, uh, if there's no animals in the cemetery, it's very easy for a resident to report somebody's violating that. It's very easy for the police, uh, to, who actually the police are at the cemetery quite a bit, I suppose, so. Any more discussion? Councilman Belladino.
I agree with everything said. We have beautiful trails and parks. Um, yeah, council has an obligation to protect, protect sacred spaces. Um, the one thing the council or the committee is considering is that the fine for this is currently twenty-five dollars. Um, we're not sure if that will be sufficient deterrent. We were sort of noting how silly it is that we're charging people seventy-five dollars for a permit to do something legally, but it's twenty-five dollars to break the law. So, um, just wanted to update the council and let them know that we will be working on adjusting that, looking at surrounding cities. Uh, we don't think that it's been adjusted for at least twenty years, it seems.
Thank you, Councilman Belladino. Any more discussion? Entertained a motion.
No move.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Veer, seconded by Councilman Soha to pass the cemetery ban, Animal Cemetery Ban Ordinance Number two thousand seventeen dash oh one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we are now closing the public hearing and we will move on to old business item letter A, core coil I F T abatement. Sam.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so a little bit of background for everyone here, since I know we do have some newer council members. Um, back in January of twenty sixteen, council created a plant rehabilitation district in the industrial park, uh, which encompasses the property that's located at two twenty-one Industrial Drive. Uh, it had been vacant for approximately ten years. Um, in December of twenty sixteen, that property was purchased by two-two-one LLC for occupation by Cork Oil Composites LLC. Um, so in twenty seventeen, Cork Oil Composites LLC submitted an application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for their rehabilitation project, which began on March first, twenty seventeen, and had a projected end date December fifteenth of twenty twenty. The total cost of the building and improvements reported by the applicant was one million, three hundred and eight thousand dollars, six hundred, three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, on September fifth, twenty seventeen, city council adopted a resolution, um, approving that application. And they were issued an I F E certificate, um, from the State Tax Commission on December twelfth, twenty seventeen. Um, last year, for those of you that were here, will remember the city staff came to council and recommended council pass a resolution to revoke that certificate. And upon receipt of an order from the State Tax Commission to revoke from the certificate, invoke the clawback provision contained in the I F E agreement between the city of Hillsdale and Cork Oil Composites. This was recommended, uh, by staff because Cork Oil Composites LLC had not started operation and production or hired employees, um, which were required as part of the, uh, agreement, uh, as of that time. So at that council meeting, uh, city council did not pass a resolution to revoke the certificate. Instead, opted to grant Cork Oil Composites, uh, one additional calendar year, um, to fulfill the conditions of the agreement. Um, on the application, it was indicated that this project would create twelve to twenty-five jobs within two years, the completion date, which again was December fifteenth of twenty twenty. Um, so that's what prompted the assessor in the Economic Development Office to bring the matter before city council last October. Um, it has since been a year. Um, as of today, we're not in possession of any documentation to substantiate that they have started commenced production, um, or hired employees as required per the agreement. Um, we did reach out to Mr. Komovec, uh, to get a response, to get some documentation. And he did submit a letter, which we included in the packet through U Alter View, uh, which was dated September twelfth, where he offers his explanation. So city staff, we are now looking to council for direction on how to proceed with the certificate, uh, whether you guys wanna go down the road of looking at, um, requesting the State Tax Commission to revoke it or, um, what would like us to do in this regard.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for Sam? Councilman Sharp.
Do you know the amount of call back we possibly could receive if we did that?
So I just talked to Kim, our city assessor, this morning, and the total abated taxes under this certificate so far, um, as of the current date, it's just over two hundred and seven thousand.
Thank you.
Yep. And there, there would be an interest applied to that as well. So I don't know the exact calculation, but just over two hundred and seven thousand so far.
Any more questions for Sam? Councilman Belladino. Any more questions for Sam? Councilman Palladino?
Have you evaluated any of the claims in the letter?
So, each, each year, they're required to submit a report to the city. Um, and again, like I said, we did reach out. Um, we have what Mr. Homovec supplied in his letter. Um, but again, we, there's several conditions of the agreement itself, such as commencing production, hiring the employees. And, uh, we don't have any documentation that that's per. We just have some reasoning in the letter, um, from him as to, uh, where he's at with the project and why that hasn't taken place yet.
No production, no employees? Do we have an idea of how much has been invested?
Hold on, Mr. Homovec. We'll give you an opportunity to speak. Yes, sir?
Well, I'll let him answer some questions specifically about his, um, investment and what's taken place so far. Um, but again, the initial, um, cost of building improvements that he reported at the time of the application was just over one point three million dollars is what was supposed to be put in.
But you don't have an estimate of how much has been invested?
I'll, I'll let him answer that question probably about where is that the project?
And do you have, uh, prospects for a purchase of the building because it's, uh, vacant for ten years prior to two thousand and sixteen?
So Cork Oil Composites, they're the ones that it's their building right now.
So this wouldn't force a sale. This would just require the back taxes as well as the full tax rate in the future?
That's, that would be up to them at that point, you know, what to do moving forward if council was to. If you guys were to recommend revoking the certificate, how it would work is it would go to the state. You would pass them a resolution requesting the state to revoke it. Uh, they would get an opportunity to go to the state, get a hearing. And the state would ultimately decide whether or not to revoke that certificate. Um, so local governments in Michigan do not have the authority to revoke it. We can only ask the State Tax Commission to revoke it. So you would have a chance to have a hearing there. Um, they would take a look at the circumstances of the matter and, uh, decide whether or not should be revoked.
So we're in the same circumstances as with C L. We're passing a non-binding resolution to the state.
Yeah, the process is we, we have to go to the state if you want it revoked. That's the process. We have to.
Any more questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam. Mr. Homovec, would you like to take the podium?
Gentlemen, my name is Drew Homovec. I think it was last year about the same time I stood in front of you and I presented this binder, which none of you saw last year, which was a full documentation of the circumstances that I have not started manufacturing. And it was all predicated on a, uh, May of two thousand and eighteen windstorm that came through Hillsdale and decimated my building. And from that windstorm, I was supposed to start production in June of two thousand and eighteen. The line was up in operation by that time. And the windstorm took off sixty-six thousand square feet of my roof, all the perimeter shut down until the end of the year, until it was resolved. Only to find that the installer, and I believe you should have received a letter from, uh, Marty Taylor, if you haven't gotten a copy, but I have copies. Um, Marty Taylor, uh, surveyed the building after the installation. And there was numerous code violations, so the, and, and the roof still leaks. So I've been litigating this whole situation for five years, five years to this day. And when I presented this whole opportunity to you last year at this time, I said the reason for my inability to start the project was, number one, the roof was not correct, although I've been able to mitigate around it. But most importantly was the, the contractor, even though he was fully paid, he put a six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar lien on my building. And it was an illegitimate lien. It took me five years to get that lien revoked. And I got the, the unconditional waiver after four o'clock, yeah, uh, this past Friday. So this has been an arbitration provider. It's been mediation. Jury trial was postponed, went to arbitration, and I've got the whole list. As a matter of fact, your counsel can't actually go to the, uh, court here in Hillsdale. I just pulled up the whole records and it's got all the dates, and it's got date by date. So what I'm telling you is, this whole reason I haven't started is beyond my control. I have not been able to start business. I've had a lien on the building. I couldn't get the financing. The roof leaked, la da 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 da. So I put forth good faith. I put in a million, actually, I think I have a million, three nines. I've exceeded the expectations by several hundred, by, uh, several thousand dollars. It's had, it's got a new roof, even though it needs some repairs. It's got new lights, new heat, new plumbing, new everything inside there, plus a multimillion dollar extrusion line that's gonna make product. Now that I have the lien off the building, I can start doing that. So what I'm asking you is, is take this whole situation about invoking my, my certificate and say, I'm gonna start, guys, but this whole thing's been out of my control. What else do I have to do? But I, I will tell you, I'll be very candid. If you decide to clawback, I'll just, I will sincerely just take Cork Oil, close it off and move it down because Cork Oil is just a tent in this building. Because I can't afford a two hundred thousand dollar, you know, hit, it's just not gonna happen. Not with, not with events going on. So, any questions for you?
Thank you, Mr. Homovec. Any questions for Mr. Homovec? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it, um, when I walked through that building five years ago, or I guess it's probably just before this all happened? I can't believe it's been that long. Is this the same equipment that you showed me to?
Five years ago, well, yes, it's an extrusion line. It's, it's a multimillion dollar, you know, extrusion line. Hundred thirty-seven feet long and it shoots out. As a matter of fact, it brought samples, which you should have been able to see last year, but. No, this is, this is a product that cannot be produced without this line. It's just gonna stay on the table. It's a product that cannot be produced without the line, and I've got the required formula to produce it. That is a high-density polyethylene plastic that's extruded and foamed. Typically, polyethylene, sixty pounds per cubic foot. My formula gets it done at a ten to twelve. And yet it doesn't lose any of its properties. So that's, that's a huge demand for the RV industry. It's a huge demand for the construction industry. And, uh, my book can write, can produce a thousand sheets a shift. And it's, uh, like I said, in my, in my arbitration process, um, I actually had one of my customers, you know, testify for me, and he told the arbitration panel as well as everybody else in the room that he would buy every, actually, he would buy every single sheet that I could possibly produce as long as I live. So, I mean, this is a very doable project. I just need to get started.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Homovec. I, uh, you know, I'm sympathetic to you for sure. Business is risky. It always is. Um, kind of the conundrum that I land is that last, at our last meeting, I voted against, uh, extending an Oprah contract on another project that, um, hasn't fulfilled the obligations that they promised that they were gonna fulfill for us. So, I kind of feel like, um, the same thing that I said, the, the same circum, I mean, no, they're not gonna be the exact same circumstances. They're gonna be different circumstances for every single business venture that anybody ever does, ever.
Were they, were they, were they, uh, within the control of the individual that, that, I, that? I mean, could he have done anything to, to sort of bend that? That's the annoying part of the question. I could do the judicial system. It got postponed due to COVID. This is a civil case. Um, you know, it just, you know, went on and on. As a matter of fact, when I stood in front of you a year ago, I was committed to go to jury trial on the October twenty-first. I was all set to go. And I even told you, I said, give me a couple of weeks. You know, let's get this thing on. And that's why I think it was a, you know, somewhat of a, a, a viewpoint where we agreed to give me another year. Because I intended to go and, you know, get started at that point in time. Problem is, the Wednesday before the start of the jury trial, one of the opposing lawyers says, well, my carrier doesn't believe that a jury trial is the best venue for this case. So they want to go into a three-panel arbitration. It took three months to pick three guys. And then to align all their, their things, all their schedules, they started in May. And then the morning of that particular first arbitration session, one of the other lawyers calls in and says, I'm in the hospital. I can't participate. The morning of seven-thirty in the morning to get this phone off. So we blew four days right there. It started in June and ended, it ended September twentieth. That's the best we can do, guys. I mean, I could, I have no control over this. But I, I, I can tell you, and I can show you here that I did receive the unconditional lien waiver after four o'clock Friday afternoon. Which, and, and we won, we won the case.
Dave, did you have something to add? Uh, yes, just wanted to confirm. I think Tom, uh, City Attorney did confirm to me before the meeting that, that lien waiver was filed.
Yes, I checked on the Register D's, uh, website today and it shows, and you can see the, uh, the discharge of the lien was, uh, recorded, I believe, on Friday.
Four oh two, Friday afternoon. I picked it up in person like ten to five.
Um, I do have one question for Mr. Homovec. Um, so we have a title word to give you additional time. Um, when would you be starting? Now that the lien has been released, when would you be starting production?
First thing I have to do is, is get this roof repaired. I have to stop the leaks. I've got, I, if I'm standing where I operate my machine, I've got a bucket right here. So I'm gonna get those, I'm gonna get those leaks mitigated. And, uh, and, but right now, I'm in the process of, I mean, the sunland hasn't even, it gets dry yet, okay? It just happened. I don't have any of the, the sunland funds that have been allocated to me to, to actually foothold for this one. But like I said, we're, we're now in the short steps. Before, we were just sitting on the thumbs. But now I can actually start walking towards completion. I've already been on the fall of my material suppliers. They're giving me, you know, and this has just happened Friday. So they're giving me estimations, estimates of what I can get my material, where it's coming from, the new pricing, everything else. My customers are just completely ecstatic. And now they can get the materials that I just shared with you. So timing-wise, we're gonna have, we're gonna be making parts before the end of the year. That's why I'm thinking that, as long as I can get this roof fixed. But again, October, you know, yeah, temperature is very sensitive in fixing roofs in the winter time, so. Hopefully I get a favorable decision from you guys. I have no questions to you if you have more to be.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just say the same, the exact same I said, the same thing I said to C L last week. If council decides to extend the I F T and we're sitting in the same place a year from now, what do you expect us to do?
Yeah, if, if, if we're in the same place a year from now, I, I have no excuse. I have actually no excuse for that. I'm sure that, I guarantee you that's not gonna happen. No, I'm committed. I'm committed to make this happen. You know, you're gonna put a nail in my coffin by saying.
Well, I just feel like you said the same thing last year.
What did I just say?
That you were guaranteeing that this, that you would be up and operating within a year. Guaranteed.
You know what? I, yeah, with the intent that this jury trial would have happened, I had no, I had no recourse in this, in this, the, the judicial system. It was, it's a, it's a, I, I won't even tell you what it is.
Okay. I, 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 my concern is consistency from the city, is that, that we're, uh, uh, that we're not treating one person one way and then treating another person the other way. That's my, that's my big concern. I just think justice is the fundamental crux of what government is supposed to do.
I understand. But I, I can share with you that if you clawback and take two hundred thousand dollars out of my operating capital by attempting to clawback on the I F T, I said, that's gonna drag things out longer than, than anticipated.
Councilman Wolfman?
So, um, you would be able to, uh, get financing now be, uh, because you now don't have a lien on the building? Will that, will that help you?
I paid cash for the building.
No, but I mean, in terms of, I mean, in terms of being able to, uh, do further repairs on the ceiling and in order to get your machinery in there and, and all that, so you could now get a loan to, to, to do, to do that?
Absolutely. I've already had conversations with, with one bank in particular. And they're the leaders, leading, uh, putting some data for S B A loans and everything else. I'm, you know, heading down a path. And I'm gonna reach out to one of the local banks here to, uh, to present my case as well. But I've got a, you know, multimillion dollars of equipment, you know, a building of equivalent, you know, collateral, for lack of a better description, and go forward.
And you've spent over a million dollars so far?
I spent a million dollars just in, just in the repairs of the building. I spent another half a million dollars in legal fees and another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in operating costs just to keep the building where it is today for the last five years. I'm strapped for cash. I'm big goose egg, you know? There's nothing left.
But you have spent over two million dollars then?
Absolutely.
From the time that you started this?
Oh, well, over two million dollars. And that's, I mean, that shows good faith. Let's face it.
Any more? Councilman Char?
I was on council last year. I've worked in that building for twenty-plus years. I know that building. You promised us jobs within a year's time. Here we are again, listening to your song and dance, as I call it. I'm with the mayor. I won't support this because you promised us jobs. Now you're gonna say you're gonna create jobs there. Where are you gonna get the people? There's companies around here cannot get people in the first place. So you're gonna take them away from them? You missed the train, is what I'm saying. In my opinion, all I've heard is song and dance. I will not support this. That's my opinion. Because I am tired of excuses. I'm tired of giving tax breaks to people. We are hitting people for special assessment districts, and most of them can't afford it, but they have to put up with it. Sorry, I won't help. I won't support this.
Any more discussion? Councilman Soha?
I empathize with you, Drew. Um, I believe in your integrity. Uh, you have my support in this. Um, but we've gotta see some action this year, or I can't continue that in the future. Um, and I don't think you deserve that vitriol. I, um, I think the circumstances were well beyond your control. Our, uh, loading legal system can be hard for you to set best to navigate. So I'm sorry for your troubles there and the extra cost it, it, it cost you. And, um, I think, you know, the RV industry is still plugging along. And, um, I think this could be a, a monumental product. And as far as labor, labor is hard for everybody right now. So the people will come, I just put the job.
To, to answer the one question about vapor, this is a very, very automated piece of equipment. Basically, you feed it and at the end of the line, you just unload it. And, um, with that being said, that this, the skillset, other than the, the one or two machine operators and the setup guys, that's, the rest are, uh, shipping and receiving, high-low operators, you know, material handling people, things of that nature. They're not that difficult to find.
So you're gonna say they're not gonna pay very well?
That's not true. That's not what I'm saying at all.
You just call them. They don't have to be smart.
You didn't say that at all.
Any more discussion? Councilman Beer?
Uh, two questions. Uh, number one, could this council do it for less than a year period? We could do six months. Okay. Uh, question number two, I mean, uh, Drew was kind of hung up in the legal system. I know how legal systems go, and the fact it was just resolved, was it Friday?
Friday.
Friday, okay. So his hands have been pretty much tied. So to put it in perspective from last year, he couldn't do anything because he has this litigation. Now he does, no longer has a litigation, so now he's free to, uh, you know, continue on this business venture. Uh, if this council just revokes the I F T, you guarantee that those jobs will never go, come to Hillsdale. I'd much rather have Hillsdale have a position of trying to find laborers because we have so many jobs. Um, and from that standpoint, I think this council ought to maybe just consider a six-month as opposed to the year. I had, uh, given the six months to get things going.
Mr. Mayor, are we just, are, are we just doing questioning him or are we now discussing the situation?
The, the council table's open. We can do either. Did you have something to add to that, Councilman Wolfman, or was that just a question?
Well, I wanted to have some, I wanted to say some things if it, this is now the discussion period, I suppose, just asking him.
I, I'd just like to, to interject one thing.
Yes, sir?
Um, to the extent that the delay is related to the lien itself, there was a way for Mr. Homovec to relieve himself of that burden if it's good in the way of financing. And that is to bond off the lien. So you can get a lien, or excuse me, a bond that allows the lien to be released. And then if ultimately you're determined to owe the contractor the place, the lien money, the bond company will then pay that, right? So you've bonded off or you'll pay it, but there is a way to do that under the Construction Lien Act. If the, now, you know, they don't do it for free, a bond company, so that could have been part of the. have been part of the problem too. But there's a distinction between litigation-related issues and the lien. So there is a mechanism by which you could bond that off, in which you could do something. Um, you know, just 'cause somebody files a lien against you, against your property, particularly the lien that you don't think is valid, doesn't mean that you're stuck until you get court to determine it's not valid. There is a way for you to get out from under that, you know, while you get a court to decide whether or not it's, it's valid.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Paladino?
Under those circumstances, would you be paying interest on the bond to mitigate the lien? And then you'd have to get a line of credit, which you're also paying interest on for the construction itself?
It depends on the amount of lien where you get the bond from, but they charge you some amount. You know, they're an insurance company. So they're gonna charge you whatever their premium is for a bond at that time. Depending on the size of the bond, it'll often determine the terms of how much they're granting. But there are companies that do that regularly because it's a big part of the construction industry.
And if it's found that the lien was illegitimately placed, would the, um, interest on the bond to cover the lien, um, would the register of deeds pay that? Would the construction company pay that?
The register, the register of deeds is immune from suit. The register of deeds is required to record that, that lien if it's presented. They can't accept, tell the contractor, I don't think you got a valid lien, we're not gonna record it. They have to accept it for recording if it's in proper format. That's the only thing the register of deeds can do. Whether or not the contractor has filed a valid lien is another story, right? And their way to get, so if I file, if I'm a contractor and I file a construction lien because I say I'm owed funds, I have to do that within ninety days of the last date that I provide labor and materials to the project. If I don't do it within that ninety day period, I forever lose my right to file that lien. If I do file a lien, I have to foreclose on it, violent action in the court. To foreclose on my lien within one year or, again, I lose my lien. So that lien is only good for a year to start with. However, if you need to get it removed sooner because you're property owner, you don't want any leans on your building, a lot of times that's a condition of your financing, right? So you may get a construction lien. Somebody puts a lien on your property, oftentimes because the general contractor didn't pay the subcontractor, for example. You end up with a lien. In, in the case of most relationships, if the general contractor screwed up, the general contractor has a contractual obligation to go bond off the lien so your property doesn't have the lien on it. If you contract directly with the contractor, appears to be the case here, you can get the bond on your own. You have costs of that. If you have subsequent litigation with the, um, contractor to resolve whether or not he has a legitimate meaning, if so, what the amount might be, um, or if you get it bounced out of court, you can ask for that bond cost as part of, you know, the recovery that you get as part of that suit. You file the slander or title, you ask for the cost to bond off the lien, all that sort of thing was part of the litigation. So yeah, you can recover those if it's ultimately determined by court that it isn't valid.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Is there a reason that you didn't pursue that option?
The, the litigation was, was multifaceted. The lien was one component of it. The negligence in the contractor's installation was a, was a major component as well. Um, the roof was not installed properly. Um, the lien, specifically to the lien, the lien was six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Michigan Construction Lien Act requires two times the value of the lien as far as bond. So now you're talking a million three. You have to have adequate capital to support. And, and basically you're, you're providing collateral for a one point three million dollar, um, bond at plus three percent interest. It was not, it was not, and then, once I got the lien off the building, let's say I, I did forego the lien, the only piece of, the only collateral that I would have had is now tied up with the, with the lien. So I couldn't even go and use that same piece of collateral to get a loan to go forward. So it was, it was, it was a catch 22, the chicken for the egg. I could not bond off. And again, this should, this should have gone to trial in twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty-three. And everything else just pushed you back, pushed you back. I pursued looking into a bond with multiple players. It just wasn't, it just was not, it was not on the actual, um, opportunity at the time.
Does that all sound correct? That you can't use the actual property that has the lien on it to bond against the lien?
The, the lease of property that I had.
Well, again, all I was doing was pointing out, there is a mechanism by which you can get out from under lien. If that is the sole issue. If you have sufficient assets to allow you to be able to, to get the, uh, the bond and you have sufficient assets to allow you to get the financing, yeah, you can do that. I don't know what Mr. Holmbeck's situation is as far as that goes. I wanted to point that out. So you made sure that you were fully informed that there is that mechanism. You can ask questions as you did Mr. Holmbeck as to why he was or wasn't able to do that.
Thank you. Um, could we give benchmarks? Uh, Councilman Veer suggested six months. Could we give a month to secure financing, three months to remove, uh, to repair the roof, six months to hire employees, something like that, potentially to assuage some of the concerns around the council?
I, I would like to just comment on that. Um, I think what we wanna do is to have Mr. Holmbeck be able to go out and start, uh, producing. That's what he wants to do. I don't, I don't see why we're thinking that he might want to delay or might, might not wanna go forward to the thing. He's got, you know, uh, he could be earning all sorts of, uh, income from going forward. So I don't see why it's, uh, of our interest to give him a certain amount of time because he clearly wants to go out and do it. You know, he's got this piece of machine or this, uh, product that he's gonna be trying to go out there with. Um, and, and in addition, I, you know, uh, to address the mayor's issue about, you know, being consistent, surely there is not another situation where you have a, a storm come in, rip the top off your building, a construction person comes in, doesn't fix it, the people who are the, you know, the, the building inspector for the county wrote a letter saying, hey, these guys didn't do that, then they put a lien on it. So that's a, a very unique circumstance as far as I'm, I'm concerned. It's not like we're, we're saying, oh yeah, well, the next person that there seemingly gets ripped off, ripped off and the contractor, uh, doesn't put the, the roof on correctly and, and then puts a lien on the building and then spends years going through litigation. Um, I mean, clearly he, he's wanting to get the thing going. And I think that's what we, and we should be pleased that, that there's, that he was lucky, lucky enough. But he persisted enough that on Friday, he now has an opportunity to go out and build this or have this building material, which is a unique product that will only be in Hillsdale.
Fine, fine. I would ask that this council is just as understanding about mitigating circumstances with our residents when they come up here and they say that they can't afford to pay a special assessment because of this, that, this, that, and the other. I don't hear these sorts of conversations at this table when we're faced with those. What I hear is suck it up, buttercup. You're gonna pay. So whatever you guys wanna do, let's move forward with it. Have we all? Yes, sir. Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna point out that Mr. Holmbeck has been paying property taxes, just like the Kiefer has been paying property taxes through this whole thing, to the tune of about thirty-three, thirty-five thousand dollars over the last six years. So he's not, the, the building was assessed at approximately seven hundred thousand dollars and he's been paying his property taxes based, uh, with the abatement based on that assessed value. And, um, you know, just as, um, I think this would just be a, a nail in the coffin if, if we forced them in. Um, you know, it's, it is like Councilman Wolfram said, this is a completely unique circumstance. And, uh, you know, I've talked to businessmen in our fine city and they say it's a difficult place to do business sometimes. And I would like the image to be overcome, um, that we would be a place where people want to come and find a derelict building in the industrial park and renovate it and start to produce materials. And, um, so I just, but I did want council to realize that Mr. Holmbeck has, is up to date on his taxes even in twenty twenty-three and he's paid about thirty, um, five thousand dollars.
Any more discussion?
I just have one, one last comment. It's, it's not as if, 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 if this were denied, like if we had that on the clawback, no one is gonna come in there and fix that building up. It was, it was, uh, it was unused for ten years. And now we're signaling that, oh, if you try to fix the thing up and there's a problem, then we're gonna be a little tough on ya. I, I just, I think this, that this building will just sit vacant for another ten or fifteen years if.
It's possible, but we don't know the answer to that. That's like you get to saying, we heard the same thing last week, uh, about if we pull out a Kiefer, then the place is gonna fall to the ground. I happen to know there's a company in Hillsdale right now that is buying buildings with cash, with no economic incentive. They're just going around buying buildings with cash. They've got fourteen or fifteen of them and I know you guys know what I'm talking about. So we don't know the answer to those questions. Things are, city attorney.
Well, I, I didn't interrupt you, or, or what, what I did want to, okay, is make it clear that you are not making the decision to revoke the certificate, right? All that you would be doing is asking the tax commission to revoke the certificate. The tax commission will then have a hearing at which Mr. Holmbeck gets notice and have the opportunity to, to appear and explain everything to them. Um, the city would have an opportunity to come. Any other, um, taxing entities who are not getting the full amount of the taxes they would receive as a result of the, uh, existence of this certificate would have an opportunity to address the tax commission at that time. And the decision as to whether or not to revoke it would be the tax commission's. So you are not deciding whether or not to revoke it. You're deciding whether or not you want to ask the tax commission to revoke it.
Tom, does that tax committee meet, does that tax, um, commission meet by appointment? Or do they have quarterly meetings, bi-yearly meetings?
It, no, no, they, they have hearings throughout the course of the year. I mean, they.
So it's not like our board of review or?
No, it's not something where you'd wait a year for that.
Okay.
They, they schedule things, I'm assuming that their docket is at least monthly, if not more frequent than that.
So if we did six months for Mr. Holmbeck and then?
You can, you're free to do whatever you want, right?
No, I know that. I just wonder.
Step one is the tax commission won't do anything with it unless you ask to have it revoked. So you could give three months, six months, a year, however long you wanted to. And then if at that point Mr. Holmbeck still didn't have things where he wanted them and you thought he was in violation of the agreement, um, you could at that point ask the tax commission to revoke the certificate at that point. And again, you would have the same clawback rights as you had now.
So you said end of the year, Mr. Holmbeck, up and operating by January first?
I said I'd have the roof fixed by January first.
Okay.
And then I, and that's, that's my goal, to get things operational. I need, I need to get this going as quick as possible.
Of course. I understand that. Councilman Veer.
Well, the, if we grant Drew the six months a year extension on, on this tax abatement, um, and he doesn't come through, we can still clawback another year of his tax abatement. So the city, I mean, so he, if he doesn't, if the council feels that he's not fulfilling those obligations, we can still clawback and, which would be a greater amount, whether it be six months or a year.
Thank you, Councilman Veer. That's a good point. Did you have something to add, Dave?
Um, just wanted to mention, um, one of Mr. Holmbeck's streets that is adjacent to his property, it has been special assessed. Um, and so he does understand the special assessment, um, component as well because, uh.
I paid it.
Yeah, exactly. So just wanted council to know that.
Uh, part, part of the agreement is that I have never laid on my taxes. I've never laid on my taxes. I pay my special assessments. I, you know, I pay all my utility bills. I mean, I'm doing everything, you know, in good faith. The one thing I couldn't do is start the business because of, of this whole litigation. That is now behind me. I can afford that with your, with your, you know, favorable decision.
Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Mr. Mankey. How long is this, or, um, assess, or this abatement continue? What's the total length? Fifteen?
I think it's twelve years.
Twenty thirty-two.
Well, okay, I missed that. I missed. So this will, we're, if we vote to make.
We, we would have to vote to revoke it, right? Otherwise it's there.
So we don't, if we, we don't have to.
So if we do nothing, then it doesn't get revoked?
Okay.
The motion is to revoke it. So if we voted no on the motion, then it's not, we're not even sending anything off to the state tax.
But if we don't, if we don't make a motion, then it just continues on? Does that hurt?
That sounds right. Yes, yes. Councilman Paladino?
The state tax commission standard is also good faith to uphold the agreement? Or do they have different standards?
So the, the statutory section that this relates to says that the legislative body of a local governmental unit made by resolution requests the commission to revoke the industrial facility's exemption certificate of a facility upon the grounds that completion of the replacement facility or new facility has not occurred within two years after the effective date of the certificate. So you got that two-year thing. If you haven't finished doing whatever rehab you're gonna do to the facility within two years, you can ask them to terminate it. Another ground upon which you could ask them to terminate it is, and this is, or that the purposes for which the certificate was issued are not being fulfilled as a result of a failure of the holder to proceed in good faith with the replacement restoration or construction in operation of the replacement facility or new facility or with the use of special building, some other kinds of things. Okay? Um, in the absence of circumstances that are beyond the control of the holder.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's an alternative ground upon which you could ask that if you revoke, either because you didn't do it in two years or because you're not doing otherwise what you were supposed to do under the certificate. Can, can you repeat the last part in the, in the absence of, of things beyond his control? And in the absence of circumstances that are beyond the control of the holder. So you haven't fulfilled it and/or, or a failure to proceed in good faith, right? So you fulfilled the conditions or you failed to proceed in good faith. And there is an absence of circumstances that are beyond the control of the holder. Right? So if Mr. Holmbeck brought, um, evidence before the tax commission that, again, circumstances were beyond my control, that's where you may fulfill it. Um, I wasn't acting in bad faith. The tax commission could on that basis say, we're not going to revoke it.
Okay, y'all. What do you guys wanna do? Sorry, Mr. Holmbeck. We do need to move along on this.
No, I understand. We're good. Okay, I'll see you.
Do we give him a timeline?
No, we can.
So he could be back next year again and say, oh, bad luck.
Sounds to me like Sam's on top of it. You on top of it, Sam?
Well, I'll just, just to comment really quick. So if you guys choose to do nothing right now, the certificate is valid. It's valid through twenty thirty-two. At any time in the future, council could decide to take this up and make that request to the state tax commission. So you don't have to do anything tonight if that's what council desires.
I don't think council wants to do anything tonight from what I'm reading, but I would say that maybe Sam and economic development up here, you guys keep a close eye on it and make sure everything's moving along. Does that sound fair, Mr. Holmbeck?
And we do, we do get, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor. Uh, we do get annual reports on this as well. And so both the assessor and myself, um, you know, look at this along with our other IFTs. So you can decide whether you want us back here in a year, whether you don't wanna put any conditions on it. Um, it's whatever council feels is proper.
Thank you, Sam.
How about if we just do, have Sam give us an update in six months on progress? How about if we just do have Sam give us an update in six months on progress?
You guys already move on? All right, we'll move on to item letter B, fee schedule discussion. You guys all know what the situation is with this. Let me open my packet here. Um. Yeah, public service committee met on October ninth, twenty twenty three to review the fee schedule. Attached are the minutes from the meeting. Uh public service committee recommends that council retain the updated fee schedule with a few suggestions on special events as noted in minutes attached. These suggestions seem like they're for saving money for the city, not for the people that are having the event. Is that right? Councilman here.
On the fee schedule, where the majority of the costs were are with the after-hours, weekend hours, holiday hours. Of having DPS staff uh take, put up the barriers and put down the barriers.
Okay, so that's for the labor costs.
For the labor costs, right. Uh we could probably get Jason up here to just address this. So what? And our hands are kinda tied from the standpoint that uh the city legally cannot give away free services. So kinda what the public service was, the main point of it was to uh have volunteers, actually have the city personnel set the barriers out. The day before whatever the normal working hours and then pick it pick them up on the Monday. But for the actual event, to have volunteers go and actually place the barriers up where they need to be to block the streets that are in question. And um I could, in fact, for this light-up parade, um I was already gonna volunteer to be one of those volunteers. To set those barricades up or barricades up. And actually, uh I think maybe a lot of the service organizations can get involved. And if we can do that, I can't remember what Jason, you were saying, but as far as the labor cost could be be reduced quite substantially um from the city standpoint, right?
Correct. So there is the option of any vendor picking up the traffic code from our office, setting it out under our guidelines of the max we make. And then maintain them, erect them, plug them down, and bring them and bring them on the back.
Have have we? We didn't use to charge labor, is that correct?
That's correct.
So why didn't we look at changing the fee schedule if we're gonna charge for the labor? And I I'm not sold on this giving away services free uh argument. Ken owns a business in Hillsdale. That business pays taxes. That funds the operations of the city. So we're not giving away our services. Our services are funded by the taxpayers and these are services that we offer them. That's my interpretation of it. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't understand how this is something we've done in the past. And I've never heard this giving away services free argument because we. Send firefighters to people's house and don't charge them uh if they live in the city, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't understand how this is.
So that's different. Um that is a service, that is a public service as defined by the general definition that's been given by the Michigan Supreme Court. With respect to things that government ordinarily does. Just because somebody's a taxpayer um doesn't factor into it at all. There is a long line of cases from the Michigan Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals that says that is violation of the Michigan Constitution. You cannot give away anything, your money, use of your prop- your property, um the services of your people if you are a governmental entity. Under the constitution of the state of Michigan without receiving full value in return, full consideration for it. Um you are precluded from doing that. And it doesn't matter whether you're giving it to a private enterprise or another public entity. So you couldn't give services away to the county without getting full value in return. You can give away property to the county without getting full value in return. That includes leasing property to them. Letting them use your barricades and such, um and in this case, the labor of your personnel, which the city is paying for. So yeah, I understand your concern, but Michigan Supreme Court for a long time has said. That's a violation of two different provisions of the Michigan Constitution and that is clear law absolutely right down the line. So.
Okay, but if we're charging, the whole point of increasing these this fee schedule was to recoup our costs. But if we're charging, and this isn't for you, this is for Jason and the public service committee. But if we're charging costs for the labors, that's recouping the costs right there. So why why are we sticking with this ridiculously? Uh cost prohibitive increases in the fee schedule?
The fee schedule unfortunately is a fraction of the total cost, but the fee schedule is also calculated in a way based on labor costs from what I understand. So it has to go through legal, it has to go through the police chief, and this is all billable hours. Um yeah, we looked into potential reductions in the fee schedule based on the city sponsoring the event and the event giving us services in return. And we could get about fifty percent reduction there, but we're talking about a hundred dollars in savings when the labor is going to be two to three thousand dollars. So, yeah, um I think what we need to do is just ensure that all of these organizations know the bill that's coming for them. And we can help them prepare the labor. Um we estimated that the city would just have to drop off and pick up the barricades. They would do that nine to five on a Friday, so they're not getting charged fifty dollars an hour plus for labor costs. Um and then uh volunteers would come and pick up and set down and hopefully, I think we were hoping two hundred dollars would be. Uh the labor cost for the whole event, just for dropping them off and picking them up. Um so. I don't know if that answers the question, but yeah, the fee schedule unfortunately was also calculated on a similar basis and we even realized. That there were certain things that we uh weren't in that calculation, but we're just gonna set those aside for now.
So, okay, the fee is for what? The fee schedule is is for what labor services the fee schedule for? Is it for the police?
So the fee schedule that we have in front is for the right-of-way permit. What's all included in the right-of-way permit is the cost of going through multiple departments. DPS, fire, or police, fire, um for user agreement, legal, all that stuff is a factor in there, including. The cost of rental cost of the traffic control to replace it in X amount of years. So that's what cost is part of the fee. So on the top of that too is the charge of the labor on the separate side of it. Um so after the event, we charge a true labor cost and that's what we're invoicing for.
So the the but the the you have the fee, but the labor cost, which you're talking about the labor cost now, has to do with the barricades?
Correct. That physically makes you.
But but so but that's not, so that fee is not, the fee isn't for that. There's that as in addition to the fee.
Correct.
And so what I'm, I guess what I'm querying is that um could we charge a different fee? For other for entities like, uh you know, if if it's a community event. Could we then charge a different fee? I think we talked about this.
My understanding is the labor we'd have to charge at a hundred percent. The permit fee we could change, but that is just a small cost percentage of the whole end hole.
Well, I can raise that to a degree. There are specific carve-outs that the legislature has created for things that you can spend money on. They say it's okay. We're basically saying this is a public purpose that you can spend the cash on. Um and one of them that's that's statutorily provided for is um it it the. Statutory section is M C L one twenty-three dot eight eighty-one and it says. The common council of any city or the corporate authorities of any village in this state shall have the power to levy a special tax. Not to exceed in any one-year formulas on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the said city or village. To be used for advertising, exploiting and making known the industrial, commercial, educational, or recreational advantages. Of the said city or village and to establish recreational and educational projects for the purposes of encouraging immigration to. And increasing the trade, business, and industries of the said city or village, provided however that such tax levy shall not exceed fifty thousand dollars any one year. And that's my preference too. So they say you can do that, right? What uh councilman um is referring to is a conversation that we had regarding what the city of Grand Rapids does. What they do is they make a designation with their fee schedule between commercial events and community events. And community events are things that um there's, you're not charging an admission fee. People can come to freely. Uh the citizens in the community can come to it. Could be grades, could be holiday celebrations, could be block parties, that kind of thing, right? Where you're not doing it for some commercial purpose and they give a seventy-five percent discount on their fee schedule for that. As part of that, you you have to agree that you're going to treat the city as a sponsor of the event. And if there are any benefits associated with it, the city has to get the benefits that are commensurate with whatever the dollar value of the discount you received is. Um and I think from what I've been able to piece together, that they're attempting to use that statute that I just referenced. As their mechanism for being able to have that reduction for what they define as community events. Because from that point, it is, they're viewing it as, it's something that we're doing to help. And and you've gotta use the city of Grand Rapids logo on your stuff to show they're a sponsor. Um you know, you've gotta indicate they're one of the sponsors of the event. And they're a partner with you in putting this event on. And by doing that, I think they're trying to avail themselves in that statutory section, right? We're doing this because. We're showing what a great community we are. It gets the word out, just like another sponsor and business community might sponsor, get their name on something for advertising purposes, right? Same thing for the city of Grand Rapids. So yeah, that is a mechanism that I think legally you could probably use as a justification. For giving a reduced fee to certain types of events that would fit within what you would consider to be something that is open to the general public.
And would we have to do anything um with the city ordinance or something to do that, or we could just that we could just decide to do that?
Well, you would wanna adopt the policy that does that, which is kinda what the fee schedule is, right? And if you look at what they have, um you know, they've got a listing even of a event guide that tells you. Here's what we define roughly, some guidelines for what's considered a commercial event as opposed to a community event. You'd wanna spell that all out in one of the policies that says all that, right? If you wouldn't, you argue the discretion other than the discretion of the council, right, to make determinations to which things are subject to that.
So if we wanted to replicate what Grand Rapids is doing, how mechanically would we do that?
If I may real quick, so I did, we did some uh public service committee, we did some work on Grand Rapids, actually contacted them directly. Um the seventy-five percent is only for the site amenities that you get at seventy percent reduced rate. Um the fee schedule is off of the commercial residential, but it's at fifty percent is by department. So in Grand Rapids, the place, you pay the police to be out there, sergeant wages. You pay everyone that's there from the city, from the top up to the top down, you pay for it. So a permit, that was the uh kind of the equivalent of the uh light-up parade was fifty four hundred dollars up there before the reduced rate and they got it for twenty eight hundred. But up there again, they're paying from the top down. Um seventy-five percent uh reduction, like I said, just for site amenities. So a park, a street would be in a site amenity, stuff like that.
Uh Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um councilman, well, from uh the public service committee did talk about that. Actually, we had this information out of last week. Um I think it's important to recognize that when we talk about our fees, we're, our application fee is seventy-five dollars. So we're talking about seventy-five dollars. The big component of these um events is the barricades. The closing of the streets, the the labor that's involved in setting up the barricades. Um that was probably, gosh darn it, probably ninety percent or is.
So it's more than the police or the fire, uh or excuse me, the police?
So in in the cases of um like the police being there, then that where Grand Rapids actually charges that, we don't. They're they're there as part of their service. Um so there are a number of things that we do that we don't even, that are wrapped up into our seventy-five dollars. And that's uh you know, that's all we, you know, get. Um as far as the uh uh labor and the barricade costs. We, those numbers were determined based on the exact cost of employees. Um like if it's overtime, so it's on the weekend, you know what that cost is for an employee per hour. Um same thing uh for after hour, you know, uh during the week that's associated with that. So we know what those costs are. And they keep track on the the work orders down to the to the the hour.
Correct, right to the minute, yes. Um yeah, so Grand Rapids too, all their traffic control, they piece rated up. So every barricade costs a twelve dollars. So, and I just use the light-up parade for instance. So they use a hundred and eight pieces of equipment. So. Um just easy math, that's a thousand dollars just for traffic control rental, not including the the labor cost of or permit cost of that, it's just traffic control by itself. So really, we're not apples to apples on what we're asking for out there.
Councilman here.
So Jason, before we adjusted the fee schedule, when was the last time we did that?
So it was a year prior and it was ten dollars before that. So we went from ten dollars in twenty twenty-one to twenty dollars in twenty twenty-two and then we're brought up this next year.
And how far back did the ten dollars go?
So I've been here going on eighteen years, so at least eighteen years.
Eighteen years prior to that?
Correct.
Okay. And then uh if we had the uh public service drop those barricades off for the light-up parade. And then had volunteers set them up and then take them down at the end. On that part of the labor, what would it be reduced from? Because I think you had calculated it's gonna be like fifteen hundred?
Correct, it's fourteen ninety-eight, yes. Labor than five fifteen permit cost.
Okay.
I mean, really, as long as the traffic control comes back with almost all the signs there to leave, it's just a matter of our guys putting it out back for for to be picked up. So we're talking a hundred fifty bucks, probably fifty dollars around there.
Now now you're still gonna pick them up from the DPS?
Correct.
Picking them up from the DPS, okay.
Yep. Um I like to use uh Public Grab for example, Kevin. Uh he's came over multiple times. He bought an enclosed trailer, might be a good resource as well. Uh he's gonna start taking his traffic control in on himself.
Councilman Paladino.
Council would willingly pay for this, I think is uh one thing we should state. We would all, ten thousand dollars for all the events in the city is, does not seem like a lot of money. And I think we're all in agreement that this is what general taxation should pay for, um basic events like this. Um the problem is, the state legislature only allows us to pay for four events a year. So eve- there was also a question about whether the city would have to host them. From what I understand, the city couldn't really host them unless it was. A different event that promoted the city but wasn't a Christmas event, for example. It would have to be somehow related to the promotion of the city. Um if I could clarify why we didn't follow the Grand Rapids option, but maybe maybe it would be worth it. Um we should talk to the event hosts. Um so they would get a fifty percent reduction on the fee schedule, but they would have to do something in exchange for that. Put our logos on stuff, provide us services, and we felt that, okay, the labor is ninety percent of the cost. We're gonna give them a, you know, a hundred dollars off. But they have to do all this extra work, so we didn't think that that act- that savings would be worth the work. What we do, where we do think the savings will be is in partnering with uh people like Kevin and. We know this is, you know, it's a big task to to take up and set down the barricades a few hours with, uh you know, four guys, I think you said.
Correct.
Um and so we we need to just partner with other organizations and sort of tackle this on a on a volunteer basis. Because it does seem that the the state is tying our hands. And we're gonna, we're gonna reach out to different organizations, uh the college. Elsewhere, see if we can get labor and if we can even um uh I think two places had barricades. Spartan Barricade was making a deal with.
The farmer's market.
The farmer's market and the college also has its own barricades. So we're gonna make calls and see, would you just donate the barricades for free for this event? We'll have volunteers to set up and take them down. And then hopefully, we could get the labor cost ideally down to zero with those partnerships. And then we're back down to the four, four to five hundred dollar range for events, which is um what they're able to pay and what where we want it to be. So. Uh I hope that that helps clarify our approach.
Councilman Solow.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, just for public knowledge, I reached out to Rotary last Wednesday at the Rotary meeting and I said, hey, we've got this fee schedule. Uh we inadvertently opened up a a knowledge stream that the city was previously unaware of and legally our hands are tied. But the Rotary Club is is very excited about helping out. It's just gonna take legwork on. I'm doing the same at Exchange Club meeting tomorrow at noon, just to see if we can get an army of volunteers. There's plenty of people with trucks and and trailers that we could, you know, get these barriers put up and and taken down. And then it would just, I think, uh we could uh make it as a thing where the community is excited to get together to accomplish these things, and then save your institutions that those crazy fees for um, because like Councilman Palladino said, we discussed, can we just make it a line item in the budget? You know, ten thousand dollars for labor for events, and unfortunately, the way that the statute is read is that's not something the city's legally allowed to do. And so all these cities that are doing these things apparently to us, that are, you know, like Coin City and all those cities that you talked about came when you came and addressed us, um I I don't know, and then will the state enforce it, right? So probably not, who knows?
Probably not?
Probably not, but um.
The parade police are going to come down here, tell us we can't have a parade?
And so, you know, I I mean, and.
We're bellyaching over, sorry, I'm interrupting you.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. I, it it's frustrating for us, and so I wanted to postulate um making us a sanctuary city for parades. Seriously, I I mean that sincerely. I I mean, yeah, of course, it's, it it has its intended effect, but um like to make us a sanctuary city for uh labor fees for parades within the city of Hillsdale.
I don't understand why we don't just keep doing what we've been doing for the past fifty years, why? This is why government sucks, guys. How how do we get away with it for, what where, when did, when was the statute passed at the state?
It's not a statute, it's the state constitution.
Okay, so nineteen sixty-three?
Yes.
Okay, so, boy, that was sixty years ago, guys.
And and the state will come most likely looking for you, would be somebody.
Somebody would have to file a lawsuit against us, and then we'd have to defend it, against it. That's what we have orders for, guys.
So I would, uh because so it's, the event fee is four, four hundred to five hundred dollars, is that what the event fee is then?
Application, street closure permit.
Yeah.
So I think it's a five hundred dollars. And then maybe you want the barricade issue on top of that.
Correct.
Any more discussion questions for Jason?
I say we tell the state to kiss off, honestly. I'm looking around this table, and I know there's things that we would tell the state to kiss off about, I have before. So we've got our community organizations in here telling us that this is cost prohibitive, and they're not going to be able to do it anymore. And we're jumping through hoops, trying to figure out why we need to do something different than we've been doing the past sixty years, I this is just why government sucks, red tape and overcomplicating things.
So is the alternative that we amend the fee schedule, would that be the alternative?
Open, not do not.
Right, right, I mean, if you said, we don't want to, we don't want to stick with what we've got, as as the mayor was talking about. If we wanted to do it, could could we just uh reduce the fee schedule, wanting not maybe back down to what it was? Or do you have, is it, is that the mechanism that you would do if you didn't want it to be four hundred dollars, if you wanted it to be two hundred dollars? So you'd need a city council motion to alter the fee schedules, that how it would work?
Correct.
I would say yes. Well, the the fact of the matter is, is before this, we weren't charging for the labor and materials that we should have, so it it was basically ignored for whatever reason, this is a long time ago. Uh but, you know, it, as the discussions come up and these things become public, then if you, if you've got something that you're not doing properly, you should try to correct it.
If I may real quick too, so the the fee schedule we have here isn't just for for special events, we also use this guide for contractors, so um the contractor needs to shut down a a street for a sewer main, they're paying the same cost as what the special events are. Um I would say you probably need to be unison on what we do for each one. Um you know, if we're giving off that, or for special events, you know, Johnny and Dubois should be getting for the same for a street closure.
That's just what I was saying in the last agenda item. Jason, you're doing a great job, you are. I I feel sorry that you're in the hot, I hope you don't feel like you're in the hot seat right now, because I do think you're doing a wonderful job, and you have for basically since you've been out of high school, you've worked under Roger, and really happy to see you in this position, you deserve it. So I hope you don't feel like I'm busting your shots too much over this.
Not at all, I, I know when I went to school for this years ago, it kind of was stem this up as we started learning more and more, um Jake, me and Jake started getting into this the last year or so, he was there. Um that's why it came up kind of now, because we finally got all of the information we had. You know, we, me and Jake, we worked under the ten-dollar rule for a long time, didn't know anything different. Until I got caught up, when we started going to school and stuff, and say this stuff, so that's how it turned out.
Oh, I know, you, you know, through education and continuing education, and you, you've done a great job. But my suggestion would be to revert to doing what we were doing before, somehow we got by. That's my suggestion. Councilman Soha.
Can we um move to revert back to what we were doing before for um special events that are community-minded, such as parades, uh what was happening tonight, the foodie, foodie walks, um et cetera?
We can do whatever we want to do, nobody's going to stop us. Tom might say, you guys shouldn't do that, but.
Well, I I will tell you that you shouldn't do something that you know is a violation of the Michigan constitution. However, if you were going to adopt a resolution, you would want to make sure that you specify to some degree what you mean by that, right? How you're making the distinction if you want to sort of bifurcate it. Um so you you would want to have some thought about that, and then bring something forward to council that was specific enough that uh, you know, you'd be able to, for the people to have implemented, so they could tell okay, this is somebody who gets the reduced, and this is somebody who doesn't.
Councilman Soha.
Thank you, um could we give discounts? Is the city allowed to give discounts if it's specified in that way? So, hey, we're charging you, uh here's the labor fees, but for these specific events, uh you get a hundred percent discount? Or whatever, I mean.
Again, you can do largely what you want. It would be subject, if anyone challenged it in court, to a review to determine whether or not that was an abuse of your discretion. Um I would try and do, if you were inclined to do that, something that made it clear that it fits sort of within that definition that we talked about before, which is something that is promotes um community, i- it's a community type event, that promotes how great it is to be in Hillsdale, right? And you can use that pretty loosely, I would say, um and probably it would pass muster from court, right? Um as long as it's something that all the members of the public are free to enjoy, that they don't have to pay for. Um there's no organization that's making money from it. You may have an issue if there are sponsors of it, right? Because they're getting advertising through it, but I mean, that that would be something you'd have to always think about a little bit. But if I were going to do that, and wanted to at least do my best to try and comply while I'm doing that, I would try and keep it limited to those types of events.
Of course, of course, maybe trip events that already have a tradition in this community, like the light-up parade, which is not a Christmas parade, Josh, so it's a it's a light-up parade.
Yeah, because because that's a whole different kettle of fish, there's a reason that Josh pointed out. That that there's a limit to the holidays that they have, and the one statute that you can fund the parades for, like Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Armistice Day, they are not religious, they don't have the other constitutional things that you might have under the US Constitution that you're spending money for, and that's a quagmire you might.
It's it's not, it's not held on at Christmas, first of all.
Right.
And it's a light-up parade, there's lights, you know, it gets dark early in winter time, so. Any more discussion? Councilman Wolf.
So uh would you draft the language if they wanted to do it, or how, who would be drafting the language to say what a special, uh you know, a um a community event is?
The the committee should probably, you have a committee that's been looking at this, if your direction was for them to come up with something. I'm sure they would enjoy doing that, but it should be something that comes from the council, either from the council as a whole or from the committee. And if you wanted me to review it, to make suggestions or recommendations, um Mr. Loenger, I would be happy to do that.
I I think, I think Councilman Soha and I are going to get together and we'll work on it, and then we'll submit it to Public Services and to you. Because I think Public Services is exhausted with the subject, is that right?
No, I'm, no, I'm fine, I, no, I'm, I want to find a solution to this, it just seems like we find a solution, and then we we've sort of pulled back and say we're going to get sued. But um the, it does seem like the the idea of splitting the fee schedule is actually more dangerous legally than just sort of burying the costs and not saying anything about it.
Why, you have to have criteria, right? For why you are, you're trying, my suggestion was to try and shoehorn it in, one of those statutes allows you to do it. And the one I referenced that I think, at least for the fee part that Grand Rapids gives a discount on, I think that's how they're doing it, right? Is that they're arguing that it would fall within that statute. So because you'd have to be real careful about if you're doing it for private profit-making entities, like Dubois Construction or, you know, all these contractors, if you're going to do things. I think you're really running foul of of what that law is designed for. It's designed, what the reason the constitution does, has those provisions, is that people determine they don't want you giving away their tax money to for profit, and it's, and that's an easy way to do it, right? That's, a- and it's something that leads to corruption, at least all sorts of things that are bad. Um so if I were going to do it, I'd look at making those distinctions, and I think you actually, you stand more of a chance to be able to sustain it if you can reasonably articulate why these people get a discount, these folks do.
I I think what we look at is things that are already rooted in the tradition of this city, so events that we have had in the past. I think that's how we do it.
Fair enough.
The light-up parade, summer in the city. Fourth of July parade, these, yeah, the things that we have been doing in perpetuity. I think that's how we do it, so.
That sounds good.
That sounds fair.
Could we find an example of a city that has extended this to labor costs? Because once again, are we, we're only talking about this distinction applying to the fees. So if we could find some examples of cities saying, no, this should cover labor costs too, I think that could help us.
I can look to see if I can find some examples, and maybe Jason can as well. From my perspective, the way I read the statute, um it, the statute's authorizing you, well, first of all, it says you can levy a tax, right, for up to fifty thousand dollars, that kind of thing. But if it says you can fund it with a tax, I'd say that you probably can fund it if you can afford to do it without assessing the separate tax, right? So since you have the ability, if you could shoehorn it within that statutory language, I think the fees would go be part of that too, right? If you can pay for a Fourth of July parade, or I'm not the fees, but the labor charge, I was right, that's all the cost. In effect, what it is, is you're expending the city's funds by paying these people to set up the barricades and such for this event. If you are free to expend the city's funds for events of that type by statute, um I think it could cover labor charges and any other cost you have. So if you could shoehorn it in, and we have a reasonable argument that would fit under the that statute, um I think you could probably do it.
Councilman Soha.
And could we make that ex post facto, so that previously paid would uh be included as well?
No.
It it's, it seems to me that we might be able to do a little bit of both, right? That if we could get the fee down and Rotary goes out and puts the barricades up, you could make it res, very reasonable for our local community events to to happen.
Do you, do you guys feel like uh Public Services has direction, and can we move out, or do you guys want to keep talking about this?
Um I would, I would like to consider making a motion to revert back for these established parades that were just named, and um to the previous until Public Services finds an amenable solution.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move on to the packet, item letter C in old business, Hillsdale Mobile Home Park. Dave.
So um you do have in in your packet the information that I was provided by Mr. John Salesman, Salesman. Um um since the last meeting, I basically indicate, not being able to give us a list of items that he would spend the two-hundred-twenty-one thousand on in the park, indicating that he would need to go to his board. Um so I put that in in the packet along with uh the previous summary, and actually a uh a summary that was put together by him and handed out to the finance committee uh at the last, prior to the last meeting, so. He did indicate he could not be here tonight, so um we could discuss this further here, or um we could uh try to attempt to get him to the next uh November meeting um to discuss with council.
That would be my uh, that would be my preference, would be to have the gentleman here again uh and to give him opportunity to meet with his board, but.
But.
Counsel?
I'll jump on it. I say it's bull, what he's pulling on us, that's my personal opinion. Take a drive, I know a few who drove through that trailer park, and it's disgusting. The residents are disgusted, he says it's a great trailer park, they pay four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month. The one over Evergreen and Jones will pay us four hundred dollars a month, take a drive through that, take a look, compare the parks.
Evergreen's got so many stipulations on it though, that the Hillsdale one doesn't, like, you gotta be, what, senior citizen, how old are you? You know, no children in the park, retirement.
Well, they have children in that park, but they have no playground, they have the street to run around in, that's their playground.
I know.
It's disgusting, and he's not here, he said he'd have us something in two weeks, that didn't happen. Obviously, he's got to meet with this big board of his, the hedge fund company that owns all this. There's a lot to the story, which I gave all of you the opportunity to see this, because I personally delivered it to you guys. If you weren't there, I made sure you got it, and I hope you all read it, because I'm ready for this guy, I hope he's here, then if you want to put it out to the next meeting, I'll be even hungrier then for him. Because I'm I'm, I've had enough, and it's time, we hold them to their account, their word, and there haven't been their word, can.
Go ahead, I I apologize, Bruce, I was going to ask Dave, can we contact the gentleman, tell him he has to be here at this next meeting, or we're just going to allow it, or they're just going to have to pay the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
So he has to be here, he has to do what he said he was going to do, or council's just not going to be discussing it anymore, he gives the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. I think we've been more than understanding with this guy.
Can I say something else?
Yeah.
We as the board took our time, the finance committee, and spent a lot of time on this. And you're guys, with your other boards, the council, you do your due diligence and homework on it, and this was our due diligence and homework on this. And we would hope you would follow what our recommendations are, of course, we'd have a good debate about it, but that's what the finance committee came up with. And okay, we'll give them to the next council meeting, but he better be here.
Does that sound fair? If he's not here, then they just got the.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
And we won't revisit it again after that?
Correct.
Okay. So that's it, he can come at the next meeting and do what he said he was going to do at the last meeting, or we're just not discussing it any further, the the fines are on the table, we vote in. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, the vote we took at the October fifth meeting requires, right now, they're required to pay us the two hundred and twenty-one thousand.
That's correct. All we rejected was the ten percent payment of the twenty-two thousand.
Which they rejected.
Yes.
When we presumed to.
Yeah, yeah, they were rejecting it, yeah, they. Councilman Paladino.
Is interest still accruing on the backed up? I thought something was said about postponing it once he, or halting the accumulation of interest once he, uh, paid the statutory fee, minus fees and interest?
Well, yes. So the interest on the, so when you fail to pay it for one month, right? So for that month, you start running interest and late fees until you've paid that tax. Um, I think I agree that statute is saying, once you've paid the tax, probably cut off the interest and the penalties. But, um, I don't know definitively that that's the case, but I think that's probably the way that you would handle it. So, once he paid off that month, they stop running on that. If he's paid it all off, or if the park is paid it all off, then I'd say at this point, there not occurring any more interest.
And I would add that that's how, that's how the city treasurer is looking at it as well. Is that, once he paid that original sixty-three hundred twenty-four dollars, it locked in, uh, the, the, the civil penalty side as the two hundred and, or twen- two hundred and.
Twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety dollars.
Exactly.
Okay. Councilman Soha.
Also, in this, um, they, this particular company, uh, I think they purchased seventeen parks in the state of Michigan. And so for them to plead ignorance is, doesn't hold water with me. And, um, the fact that we, just to remind council, Peter sent them the letter on January of twenty twenty-two, when it was realized that they hadn't been paying this. Is that correct, Mr. Manki?
Yes.
And then he sent another one in twenty twenty-three in January.
Correct.
And that's what got their attention, because it was over three hundred thousand dollars is what we had estimated. And then we corrected it when they gave us the numbers of occupied. Alright, so just wanted to remind council that the city was very, um, forthright to attempt to communicate and, um, resolve this. And extremely generous, in my opinion, with the, uh, ten percent settlement fee that the company rejected, so. And they sued us because of their water meters were broken. And that suit was summarily dismissed. So, just an effort.
Okay, so he's got to tell them next meeting. Okay. We move on. New business item A, city manager annual review. Dave, you're not handling this one. This is going to, oh, who's the chair of O G?
Me.
Councilman Morse.
You have a memorandum in front of you that we, uh, approved and, uh, self-explanatory. Basically, uh, we took a look at the, uh, the various, uh, purposes that the city council put forward, mayor and city council put forward for the city in the past year. And, uh, we see either completion of those things or, uh, significant progress towards them. And therefore, we recommend that the city manager receive a two percent raise.
The two percent raise that's in his salary if he.
That's right.
That is.
City manager, the city manager part of the.
City manager part of the salary.
His, right, the B P U part is, is up to the B P U.
Okay. We agreed to this when he gave him the contract, as long as he fulfilled the goals that he was supposed to, so.
Exactly so.
Any discussion on it? You're doing a good job, I think.
So, we're just approving what we already approved for this.
We have to do this every year.
Right, because he, he met the, I mean, he met the qualifications and the standards and stuff. We're saying, yes, he met them.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's already in his contract that he's got a two percent cost of living increase if he fulfills.
Now, the cost of living is independent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Cost of living is independent.
But this is already in the contract. And then we do the review every.
We revised it. We had revised the contract. We took the wrong things out.
That's right, that's right. I'm satisfied with Dave's requirement. Councilman Paladino.
What's the cost of living increase?
I believe that's two percent too, right?
No, it's based on COLA was.
It's based on the federal cost of living.
Last year.
Yeah.
Well, then I don't know what it is. But that's for all employees across the board that get the COLA increase?
No, that's not, not the case. Um, there is an annual increase that the employees were given, but this is based on the contract. It, it was to take the guess out of it, it was set at the federal cost of living.
Okay. Councilman. Federal cost of living.
The federal cost of living was eight point seven percent for social security and other things.
I accept ten percent raise. Total, well, would be, our end, yes, or our end is ten percent. Ten point seven.
Ten point seven percent? And what's our end of it is what, forty percent of your salary? Is that what the general funds?
Correct. It's sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty, sixty. Okay. Councilman Paladino.
I think eight point seven percent is very generous. I don't think the average citizen is getting that. And the city is suffering the cost of inflation itself, um, so.
Any more discussion? Councilman Soha.
To Councilman Paladino's point, or to, can, I mean, i- if the COLA is in the contract already, then why would we have to reapprove that COLA?
We don't have to approve that. This is the two percent, this is the two percent.
Yeah, this is just.
That's all we're gonna.
Thank you.
This is the stuff we put in his contract, guys, so. We either look at it at the end of the year and decide that he's fulfilled his obligations and approve it, or we say, you've done a crappy job and we're not approving it, or we can't afford it, and we're not approving it. So, but this, it's the contract that we, that council voted for, so.
Was this approved during the budget hearing?
His contract's in the budget. It's budgeted.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I wasn't here that day, so I, I don't mean to offend the council anyway, but. Uh, I, I do think eight point seven percent is sufficient. And also, I, I don't consider the street repair portion as being, um, accomplished under the, under the conditions in the city charter, um, because the special assessments far exceed the standard military.
We don't, the street repair part of it isn't in the contract anymore. We took that out of his contract because of the special assessments.
It says the goals for street repair and reconstruction maintenance.
Okay. The two percent used to be based on, uh, if whether or not he fulfilled a half mile of street repair work. So we took that out of his contract, because that automatically gave him the increase. And we said, since we're doing the special assessments, that feels kinda squicky to, uh, tax the residents and then give it to him, uh, direct, like a basically a handoff of, here, we're gonna tax you, or we're gonna give the money to him for achieving the spec- a special assessments, so. But the street repairs always can be our goals. Our council goals, which we give to him at the beginning of the year, which are gonna be, which we didn't, we left our, I wouldn't wanna say we didn't do them, we, we let, left the goals the same that they were last year, which was street repair, there was the, uh, there was the, uh, the officer in the schools, what do you call that, resource officer.
Central Chamber of Video.
Right, it's all in the memorandum.
Yeah, it all, it's all.
Sorry to clarify, I'm not disputing the, uh, accomplishment of the goals on the list per se. I'm saying, I was a no on the budget and I missed, I missed the meeting.
Well, I think it's a very substantial increase, Dave, but I think this is the contract we agreed to and so we're.
Can I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It was eight point seven. I've got the, I'm, I'm social security, that's what I received last year. I believe this year it's gonna be three percent or something, so that would be the next year. So, one year was the rate of inflation and everything, so it was not high. This year it's not gonna be that high, so that's just the way the ball rolls. Sometimes you only get two percent on social security. I mean, it's, it fluctuates like crazy.
No, we talked about that when we approved the contract.
Right.
That, that it was gonna be a trade-off between.
Correct.
Using the federal rate or just giving a flat rate ourselves and.
We agreed to the COLA.
We agreed to the, to the federal COLA because, uh, and Dave knew that it was gonna fluctuate.
Right.
He probably was smart and knew that inflation was going up and cost of living was, but I can't blame, blame the guy for being smart on his contract.
That's why he's a city manager.
That's why we have negotiations and this is what we agreed to, so we either. We either stick to it or we. Or we don't, I mean.
So you need a motion? No. Don't, doesn't say so. I don't believe so.
That says discuss, discuss and approve.
Okay.
So we need a motion and a second to vote for.
I said move, second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morse, seconded by Councilman Soha. All? Or Sharp? Can I have a roll call votes, he cleared?
Councilmember Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sofford?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
And Paladino?
No.
That's six, one, it's approved.
Thank you, Katie. Alright, we'll move into miscellaneous reports. I've got one proclamation, National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Uh, whereas October twenty twenty-three marks the seventy-eighth anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas the history of National Disability Employment Awareness Month traces back to nineteen forty-five, when it started as a week and focused only on people with physical disabilities. Whereas later it expanded to a full month and its name and scope evolved to acknowledge the importance of increasing the workforce inclusion of people with all nature of disabilities. Whereas workplaces welcoming all, all the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities and affirm the city of Hillsdale's commitment to an inclusive community that increases access and equity for all, including individuals with disabilities. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Hillsdale recognize and commemorate the seventy-eighth anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that the U.S. Department of Labor offices, Office of Disability Employment Policy in the city of Hillsdale call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Hillsdale, Michigan to observe October with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities add value and talent to our workplaces and communities. And be it further resolved that the city of Hillsdale pledged to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full part participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities. And we've got one appointment, Joanne Miller to the cemetery board. I'm sure a lot of you guys know Joanne. But she is a community gem for sure. Any questions about that appointment? Motion down the floor from Councilman Soha to appoint Joanne Miller to the cemetery board. Uh, that's seconded by Councilman Veer, all in paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll open up the podium to general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments for three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And you may discuss anything that your heart so desires at this point. The podium is now open.
Hi, okay, so Mary Potega, thank you so much for having, um, thought through what it would mean to put that much of an increase on what we wanna do here. Um, I really, I always work with Chief Hattner. Um, there was a year that we had to reschedule the parade because it rained and it was a horrible freezing rain. So we had to reschedule it. I didn't really think it was a good idea. I don't think I'll ever do it again. Because when I did, um, I really love that you guys are all parade chairs and going and getting volunteers. Because we actually have volunteers that come and do the barricades, like where it's not just, we have a lot. We have a little mini army. It's the Hillsdale Chargers baseball team comes and does half the perimeter. And then Chief has always been amazing with his crew coming. And so, um, you're still signed up though, and so is Terry. I'm gonna just have you guys there to it. So, and I'll always take more. Co-honest, it would be fantastic. And that's what the Light Up Parade is about. It's not necessarily Christmas. It's about being a light in the world. And our world is chaotic, hectic, and super dysfunctional. And this is a moment where we just stop and we, um, pause and see the spectacle of what lighting up can do. So this was a very smart choice, I believe. Um, I wasn't against minds. I think we should have some things where, you know, you guys pay for a little bit of that and there. But, um, it was, it was tough when I knew, you know, we wanna put these things on. We, Mr. Manki, you were our grand marshal the first year that you came here. So, it's not like the city doesn't get a huge benefit. And I know you gentlemen all know that, but thank you very much for thinking about it tonight and thinking of the benefit for your city.
Thank you, Mary. Podium's still open.
I haven't been here for a while, but I wanted to bring to this council's attention, fifty-five South Broad Street. That building, that house was condemned in two thousand and nine. Two thousand and nine, they condemned that building. I think it's been through four different owners since that period. Everyone was gonna repair it. They were gonna redo it. This is twenty twenty-three, nothing's been done, and it's gotten worse and worse. And I don't understand, I, I moved there in two thousand and twelve. And if I had looked at my surroundings a little better, I thought South Broad Street, well, that's a big deal for me, for. Growing up on the, an apartment over here in North Hall Street. And I had come to the city to ask them why that yard hadn't been mowed. And they said, well, the owners condemned it and they don't wanna do it, so the city will do it. My neighbor is mowing the yard, because he just feels he needs to have the things look at halfway decent. And I, I even told him, I said, why don't you just quit? Maybe somebody'll, when the brush gets high enough, they'll do something. But anyway, I, this has just been an ongoing thing and I don't understand how they can keep changing ownership and not do anything. So, that's on my list. It's been on my list since two thousand and twelve. And the grass was twenty inches tall, so I just wanna bring that to this council, since I've been doing it every, almost every year with a new council, so. Thank you. I hope you can accomplish something this year.
Thanks, Dick.
Okay, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Since the, the comment was made, um, we actually had a hearing scheduled on that for September twenty-eighth. The owner did not show, so a default judgment was submitted to the district court. I don't know if we've gotten it back yet, but there will be an order that says that it can be demolished and, or the, the owner asked him if he doesn't, then it's, uh, let's speak and do whatever needs to be done then.
Thank you, Tommy.
That solves my problem? Our problem?
It's up to them.
Public comment? Podium's still open?
Uh, good evening, James Galloway. I've been to the last two homelessness task force meetings. Um, a very curious thing happened at the last meeting. They revoked the privilege of public comment and suggested anyone with concerns about homelessness, uh, take them to the council. So, just asking for clarity about the purpose of that body. to the council, so, just asking for clarity about the purpose of that body, their scope, their powers, if they're even allowed to revoke public comment from their meetings, and who on council then wants to be the sort of liaison for concerns about homelessness? I don't know if you can provide that clarity to me tonight, but, uh, it was very curious to me that they don't want public discourse at those meetings, they want the council to be the conduit through which we offer ideas about that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, James. Podium's still open? Seeing the public comment, we'll close the podium and move into City Manager's report. David?
Thank you, Mayor, um, just, I'll, I'll keep this brief, um, just wanna report on the Hallett Street Bridge, as many of you might know, um, it was actually hit by a garbage truck this morning, um, and, which did probably the most damage to the bridge that's ever been done, most, most times the bridges lost are won. Uh, it's always won, that's right, uh, up until it was hit by a garbage truck, movement in a pretty good clip. Um, that being said, the Hallett in that area is going to be shut down, uh, probably for an extended period of time, uh, we were told probably at least thirty days, if not longer, while the M dot engineers and railroad engineers examine the structure and whether it can be salvaged, whether it has to be completely replaced, um, they had some engineers in today, they have others coming in tomorrow, so we should have a better idea by the end of the week, but it does affect, uh, a large portion of the community, um, folks that travel to Wilk Carlton, uh, folks that travel to the medical center, um, will now have to go, uh, you know, uh, through a detour either south or, uh, on bacon to Lake Wilson and around, so, we'll know more here hopefully this week, but, uh, it looks, Bruce, Bruce took some pictures of it, but it does look pretty, pretty bad, so, that's all I'm gonna report on there.
Awesome. Any questions for Dave? Councilman Saha?
Does the city carry any responsibility to help in as far as funding and repair process for the bridge?
Um, no, we were, we should not have any expense, um, due to that, uh, there was, uh, uh, Noah outside, third party who hit it, so there will be insurance and, and whatnot involved in that, so, I'd say no.
I like that answer.
We've signed it properly, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that it's nine foot eight inches, um, and if you can.
It's not gonna stop.
Any more questions for Dave? Council comment, anybody have anything? Motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Saha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, meeting's adjourned.